Eastbound, I think it's closed from St. Paul down to, I'm blanking on the name of the street, beyond Carlton.
Stay away from there. And people seem to be heeding the message. I think it was a Reddit. I've been out of town, so I read it was a rough first day on the Mass Pike. I believe the Mass Pike all the lanes have been restored.
Right. And I believe ComAv is slated to open up this on Sunday, Sunday morning. So we've got another couple of days.
It's moving ahead. Okay. Any other announcements? It's summer, it's a little quieter in town. Okay, so let's dive into the schedule. Miscellaneous items, we have minutes for public comment. Anyone here for public comment? I see none. Okay, so we'll dive in.
One comment over here.
Oh, come on up.
You have to come to the mic.
Five minutes.
It's actually related-
Can you tell us your name?
Yeah, my name is Steve. I'm the business owner right across the street on Washington Street.
Steve, your last name?
Liu, L-I-U.
Okay.
I'm here actually for a different matter, but I just want to bring this up as well because I'm actually here representing the interest of a few business owners on that street. I don't know if the board is aware of the construction that was going on over the past couple Saturdays. Comcast is putting on some kind of cable right on that street. So they closed down basically every single street that has access to Washington Street on Saturdays. And then I spoke to the restaurant owners from the pizza place, the Brazilian restaurant owner. All of our businesses were impacted those two Saturdays by at least 50 percent. And for restaurants, I've been a restaurant owner for five years, Saturday is always the busiest day. So from our perspective is, I don't know, I know they have a Saturday permit, but I don't know what time the permit they're allowed to work until because this particular Saturday, two days ago, they worked until 8:00 PM. So the streets were still closed at 8:00 PM. So we had basically no lunch business and our dinner was hurt. Like at 7:30, our restaurant was empty on a Saturday night. So I don't know if this is, if this is a public work, like for the town or for the city, we would understand, but this is for Comcast, a private company for their own profit purposes. We were not aware of this. Like we, I guess our point of view were our, we didn't have a vote or a voice into this and it directly impacted all of us. And the business owners that I spoke to, they were basically hurt by $5,000 over the two, past two Saturdays. And for us, we lost maybe 50 percent of our business as well.
Have you talked to anyone in Town Hall?
I have not. Actually, it just happened this past weekend. I'm actually here for a manager change. I just want to bring that up since I don't know if this board is, you know.
Well, it's, it would be more effective if you had contacted us before so we could get you some answers.
Oh, okay.
So, you know, we don't have any answers for you.
Is there any particular direction-
We can get them, but I don't know, unless-
Contact information with here.
Okay. Or the commissioner of public works is sitting in the back. Why don't you give your contact information to him?
Okay.
And, all right.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Papasturgen, why don't you just see Mr. Papasturgen?
Okay, I will. Thank you.
This feedback is very useful.
Right.
Because they come before this group quite frequently asking for permits and it's good to be able to ask them questions about past projects and how they were able to notify abouters.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think too, going to 8:00 PM requires some special permitting. Don't they have to cut off earlier, especially on a weekend?
Seven.
Seven.
Seven, yeah. They told me they were leaving at 6:30 because I was, they were right outside my door. Like my entire restaurant was blocked. So I just kept on asking the people working there and then they said they would be leaving by 6:30. I'm like, okay, 6:30, I can still have people come in. And then I have people like made reservations that night because they saw the construction, all the roads were blocked, they had, they called in and canceled them. And so I took photo of them still working at 7:30. Like they were there until maybe close to 8:00, 8:00 PM, so.
Was there a police detail?
There was one police officer there, yeah. There were two during the day and then as they were wrapping up and pouring the concrete onto the road, there was one officer that was still there. But I don't know if he was aware of how long their permit was for, yeah.
Right, okay. Why don't you trade contact information with Mr. Papasturgen?
Okay.
And hopefully we can get you some answers. Hopefully this is, there won't be any more disruption, the disruption. Mr. Papasturgen, you wouldn't be aware, okay?
Yeah, I think they were done. They were finished by yesterday, but I just want to bring this up because at least the three businesses that I spoke to, we were impacted by this work, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, minutes. July 10th, I have a change which is to include the statement that we voted on in the minutes.
The immigration and-
Right.
I thought that was at the end of the minutes.
Well, it's not here.
Oh, to include the actual draft.
Right, yeah. So it says we voted something, so what we voted should be here. And then I have a small change on July 24th.
I had some small edits as well to both sets of minutes.
Yeah, I had some edits and I gave them to you.
Okay, I'll move the approving the minutes of July 10th and 24th. Do we need to do, select person Green, you weren't here on the-
Correct.
10th, so we'll do, we'll do two votes on the, the motion is to approve the minutes of July 10th as amended. All those in favor, please say. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Abstain.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye and move that we approve the minutes of July 24th as amended. All those say, all those in favor say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Next item is a question of authorizing a transfer of $10,200 from the Ryder BAA Trust Fund account to the Arts Council matching grants account. Mr. Faison.
Good evening, Austin Faison, Assistant Town Administrator. So this is a yearly transfer that we make for the Commission for the Arts for a stipend, $600 a month. Usually we do it later in the fiscal year, but with my transition, we wanted to get it on the books early. So that's $7,200. The additional $3,000 is for the Community Poster Kiosk Program and the plotter needs to be replaced with that, for that. So that's an additional $3,000, bringing the total to $10,200. And the current balance in the BAA Trust Fund is approximately $261,000. So there's plenty of money.
Okay. Any questions, comments? I'll move that we authorize the transfer of $10,200 from the Ryder BAA Trust Fund account to the Arts Council matching grants account. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Great, thank you.
And next item is a question of authorizing the application of Brothers Restaurant Corp. doing business as Brothers Restaurant Albiero Lo Para, manager for Harvard Street for an alternate manager for Edison Gutierrez.
Mr. Chair, it looks like the police department's taken a look at the application and sees no reason to deny the application. Everything appears to be in order, so I will.
So the, the application was for two. One of them is still pending. So we can approve the, the application for Edison Gutierrez. Right. Mr. Gutierrez here tonight?
Sure.
Sorry. Okay. Then we'll, I'll move that we approve the application of Brothers Restaurant Corp. doing business Brothers Restaurant Albiero Lo Para, manager for Harvard Street for an alternate, for an alternate manager of Edison Gutierrez. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Question of approving the application of Barbecue Lamb Brothers, doing business as Wow Barbecue, Mr. Liu, owner, and this is for an alternate manager, Yomai Wang, who are here. Application looks okay.
Yeah, the police department took a look at it, did the necessary checks and sees no reason to deny the application at this time.
Okay.
I think the comment was that there needs to be receipt of a crowd manager certification.
I thought I saw it in the packet.
Maybe it came in.
No, I think you're right. I apologize for that.
Since they're here, we can ask, do you have the crowd manager certification?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, so you'll provide that to Dawn in the select person's office and select board's office and so we'll, the vote will be contingent on receipt of that. So I'll move that we approve the application of the Barbecue Lamb Brothers LLC doing business as Wow Barbecue, Steve Liu, owner at 320 Washington Street for the following alternate manager, Yomai Wang, contingent upon receipt of the crowd manager certification. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you. Question of approving the application of Porto Maltese, doing business as, Porto Maltese LLC doing business as Porto Maltese, Zachary Ostra, owner at 1634 Beacon Street for an alternate manager, Serge Arachiev.
I'm Zach Ostra and this is Serge.
Okay, welcome.
And he intends to be our new manager, alternate manager.
Alternate manager. You're the manager, I presume?
Yes.
Okay. So this is a good practice, they don't have to be there.
Yeah, I could take some time off now.
Yeah. Looks okay?
Looks okay.
Okay. So the application appears to be in order. Just for the public, the reason we're not pressing with lots of other questions is we've done this with the manager and the manager's ultimately responsible. So the alternate managers, we're relying on the police department to vet these for us. So I will move that we approve the application of Porto Maltese LLC doing business as Porto Maltese, Zachary Ostra, manager, owner at 1634 Beacon Street for the following alternate manager, Serge Arachiev.
Arachiev.
Arachiev, I didn't have-
Good luck.
It's all in the inflection, okay. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have some temporary alcohol beverage licenses, so I'll move that, they're in order, I presume?
Yes.
Before I move them. So I'll move that we grant temporary all kinds alcohol beverage sales, non-sales license to Lars Anderson Auto Museum for a wedding reception to be held on Sunday. On Saturday, August 11th, from 5:00 to 11:00 at 15 Newton Street. I'll also move that we grant temporary all kinds alcohol beverage sales license to Pine Manor College for a wedding held on Saturday, September 1st, from 5:00 to 10:00, 400 Heath Street. I'll also move that we grant temporary all kinds alcohol beverage sales license to Pine Manor College for a wedding to be held on Sunday, September 2nd, from 5:00 to 10, 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM, I presume. It's a misprint in our calendar, it says 10:00 AM.
Or that's one heck of a wedding.
Right. We'll assume it's 10:00 PM and if it's one heck of a wedding, they can come back and we can correct our vote and think about whether we want the party to go all night. So three temporary licenses, that's the motion. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay, that gets us through the miscellaneous calendar. And moving on to our main calendar, Ms. Dobek and Mr. McCabe are going to talk to us about the tax, senior tax workoff program.
Thank you very much. Gary McCabe, Chief Assessor, and Ruth Ann Dobek, Director of the Council on Aging, is here with us and thank you for the opportunity to spend a couple of minutes with you. We have a request of the select board regarding the senior property tax workoff abatement program, but before we make that request, I wanted to just take a moment to give you a brief history of the program. The current fiscal year 19 will be the 10th year of this program. It started in fiscal year 10. It's authorized by General laws, Chapter 59, Section 5K. So we went to Town Meeting who approved the adoption of the program. Then we came back to the select board who approved a pilot for 20 eligible taxpayers. That was for fiscal year 10.
So can you explain what the program is for the public?
Sure, sure, I can do that. The program is an exemption for certain eligible taxpayers. So it's for property owners and they must apply and the requirements are that they be 60 years old and own and occupy their home. And there's been income limits that have increased over the years. The current fiscal year is $56,800 for adjusted gross income. The program currently has 30 participants and that's set by your board. We're here tonight to increase that number of participants. So it's not unlimited. We, you know, we can control a number of aspects of this program now that it's been authorized by Town Meeting.
So the point of the program is eligible seniors can work in lieu of taxes.
Right, so that, thank you. So the, the program allows for 125 hours of volunteer service within a town department and in exchange for that, you get a credit on your property taxes.
Thank you.
And the current credit is $1,500.
Right.
So in the last 10 years, we've gone back to Town Meeting to increase the income and we've gone back, which they've done, and we've come back to you to increase the number of participants in the program. So for this year, we're coming back and asking you to increase the number of participants from 30 to 35. The abatements effectively that are granted through this program come out of the Oval A Reserve account and are not, you know, distributed to the other taxpayers. The current program is very robust and Ruth Ann's gonna just spend a minute to talk about that, okay?
Thank you, Gary. Ruth Ann Dobek, Director of the Council on Aging, and we are pleased with the success of this program over the last 10 years and anyone in the public who may be interested in applying can do so through the Senior Center office. One of our social workers, Deirdre Waxman, will interview potential participants and works with the town departments to find suitable positions and then is the administrator of the program. So in this last fiscal year where we've had the 30 slots, many of those participants are at the Council on Aging and Senior Center. The next largest group is at the library. Town Hall has many positions, the assessor's office, planning department, fire, building. This year we added payroll. The select board has had a person in the past, recreation, Brookline, adult education, fire, health. So you can see that we are hitting many of our departments. The exciting potential for this year and one of the reasons that we're seeking an increase is after a couple of years of really trying to work with the school department, we now have potentially five slots in the schools. We have somebody working currently at BEEP and we've had a successful person already complete their tax workoff this fiscal year at the high school library with a great success. So to get into the school system would be really of great potential in this new year with the new positions. One of the things that Gary and I are stressing is that the program does require the town departments to be willing to do the supervision and find the work. But what we find is that many of the participants come back year after year and so some of those jobs, like scanning in annual reports and shredding are something that can be saved for this type of work and has been a very successful match. We've also been very creative in some of our work opportunities. One of our participants worked at the golf course and actually we lost him because he got a full-time job at the golf course. Couple of the people have actually gone on to be hired by the town in either part-time or full-time work and have lost their positions. We also see people coming in and out of the program based on their finances. So because there is that cap, as Gary described, that's tied to the HUD, moderate level, we've had people that one year may not be eligible because they might be slightly over income and then they've gone back on the program. Many of the people will continue to volunteer after their 125 hours. I think last year it was just under 50 percent. Will continue in a total volunteering capacity. The youngest participant is 62 and the oldest just had her 90th birthday in June and is probably one of our harder worker, workers and is not giving up her employment anytime soon or her stipend. There's some, as I said, some wonderful success stories and then there's some, a couple of people who are truly marginal and quite needy. And we work really closely with the full gamut of people who are incredibly talented, qualified, to people who may be struggling with perhaps mental illness that still need this program and try to accommodate that full range, which is why it was appreciated in the override that we were able to increase our geriatric social work because that's who manages this program and then works with people on other tax deferral issues. Sometimes the people in this program then are eligible for the tax deferral program or other benefits and Gary's office has been wonderful in making sure that seniors who may be struggling are knowledgeable about any other options open to them. So we are excited about this increased opportunity with the schools and are looking to seek five more slots and are here to answer any specific questions.
Yeah.
I was gonna give some overarching comments and then end with a question with the indulgence of my colleagues here. So I think as, as many know that this is an issue, senior tax issues is an issue that we've, we spent a lot of time talking about over the past few years here in Brookline. It's come to Town Meeting a few times. I actually ended up chairing a select board committee on the topic. So there's been some work done in the past. The work is ongoing. I have the pleasure of serving on a moderators committee that's continuing to look at these issues. So stay tuned for further developments. But one of the things that came out of that select board committee that I chaired that concluded its work, I think about a year ago, was a recommendation that we look at increasing the senior tax workoff slots. So I am overjoyed and very supportive of this, this question before us. I think, I think it's great. I think it's one tool in the toolbox. There are some other things that we're looking at and, and that we're pursuing and this is a great start, not a, not an end. That brings me to my question. One of the things that we, we've also pursued and this was a vote taken at the most recent Town Meeting was the, the increase of the income threshold for eligibility for some of our, our other tax relief programs, the most, particularly the tax, the tax deferral program. And I think I heard rumor that that bill was filed. I know that's a fact, but I heard rumor that, that the relevant committee, the revenue committee released that bill. I'm wondering, as long as you've got Mr. McCabe here, if he can give us an update on where it stands and what, what we have to look forward to.
Certainly, select board member Franco, I can do that. As Ruth Ann mentioned, the income limit for the senior workoff program, we've tied to a HUD, a figure. So that has been increasing each year. The, the program that Ben is mentioning is the tax deferral program, which is tied to the Senior Circuit Breaker Income Tax Program and it's tied to that at the lowest level, which is currently $57,000 for a person single, filing as a single taxpayer. We've petitioned through Town Meeting effort and your efforts and Ben's efforts, petition the legislature to increase that amount to the, for the tax deferral program to the higher circuit breaker number of $86,000, which is income tax filers who file married filing jointly. So you don't have to be married filing jointly, but we're gonna point to the $86,000. And yes, that bill was filed by Representative Smizik's office. It was heard by the joint revenue committee hearing, which Mel Kletter and I attended, and it was ruled out of the revenue committee to the general court. It was not taken up during the regular sessions that ended on last Tuesday, but we're hopeful that it'll be taken up in formal session very soon. And that would allow us to increase currently, for this year, the income limit for the deferral from $57,000 to $86,000.
Okay.
Could I just ask if you have any estimate of how many people that would encompass? I know this has been, this has been a tricky, tricky problem to get your hands around.
It's a very hard question, select person Heller. An educated guess would be, you know, we're hoping to double the amount of people in our program, which sounds like a lot except we only have 10 currently and we're hoping that maybe we can get to 20. It's a modest goal, so, you know, we're hoping we can achieve that. I should also mention this increase from the $57,000 to the $86,000 is a home rule petition. So, you know, I don't see any reason it shouldn't, it shouldn't pass. And I can also share with you, the city of Newton was right behind us in line with the same petition to go to the $86,000. So we expect that to happen and, you know, we're very hopeful that we can double the amount of people in the program.
As I understand it, Newton has a greater participation in this program than we do. Is that correct?
I believe that is correct, the deferral program, yes. I believe their current income limit, they had a home rule petition a number of years ago that increased it somewhere around 72,000, I think.
Okay, any other questions or comments? So I'll move that we increase the number of participants in the senior tax workoff abatement program. Abatement Program from 30 to 35. All those in favor, please say aye. Select Person Franco.
Aye.
Select Person Heller.
Aye.
Select Person Green.
Aye.
Select Person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
And again, if anyone is struggling with their property taxes or is interested, please contact us or the Assessor's Office.
Finance Department Personnel.
Love the suit.
Good evening. Gina Franconi, Finance Department. I am here to request the authorization to hire a clerk in the Treasurer's Office. This individual provides customer service at the window, on the phone, processes all of the payments that we take, and does a lot of reconciliation. It's an incredibly important position in our office.
Literally the face.
The face, yes.
Any questions from the board? And you'll be working to get as diverse a pool as possible?
Absolutely, yes.
I'll move that we authorize the filling of senior clerk typist vacancy within the Treasury Division of the Finance Department. All those in favor, please say aye. Select Person Franco.
Aye.
Select Person Heller.
Aye.
Select Person Green.
Aye.
Select Person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
And we have Public Works, Public Works, a bunch of positions. Commissioner, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm here to ask your, your approval to fill nine vacancies in the Department of Public Works. We actually have 11 vacancies in our staff as of this point in time. Two of them have already been previously authorized. But the nine consist of an Assistant Civil Engineer, Ian For, in our Engineering and Transportation Division. Kurt Frazier has resigned his position and he's moving on to form his own company.
Really?
So we wish him well. The Senior Landscape Planner/Architect is a new upgraded position that was done with the retirement of Jim Castleman, who was our landscape designer. We, through the budget process, upgraded that position to a Landscape Planner/Architect that's gonna see, oversee all of our horticultural services. And we're, we're excited about advertising that position. Senior Office Assistant in our Central Office has resigned to take on a new position in Cambridge, so we wish her well. And that is also gonna be a, a outside hire. We've already posted that internally and, and got no takers on that one. Motor Equipment Repair Person in our Highway and Sanitation Division, of course, Fleet Maintenance Mechanic. The gentleman who was in the position had just recently retired after about 25 years of service. Mechanics are very hard people to find, and we're hopeful that, that we can get someone on board quick because we're about to enter, I know it's very hot out today, but we're about to enter our season where we get all of our snow equipment ready to roll, so that's coming soon.
It's hard to dream about snow right now.
We have two motor equipment operators, one in the Highway Division and one in the Sanitation Division. One is as a result of a promotion within the division, and the other is a retirement, a 33-year employee, just recently retired, moving on to bigger and better things. One labor position also in the Highway and Sanitation Division that's vacant due to a promotion, and two utility craftsmen, craft persons in the Water and Sew Division. One through a, is vacant through a resignation, and the second through a promotion. So all these positions have been posted internally and, well, the promotions have been made, that can be made, and now we're looking to get authorization to bring on new hires.
Okay. Any questions? Select Person Green.
So I notice, not an expert in this, but I noticed that there's at least one position, Senior Landscape Planner/Architect, that really would lend itself to finding someone through means other than posting on work boards and Pro Diversity Network, et cetera, rather through word of mouth. And I sort of urge you to inquire of your, of the people that you currently work with, the landscape architects or others, to get recommendations from them of diverse candidates that, you know, we can consider. I mean, it's, you know, you know, we, everyone says that, I mean, not just you, but everyone says that they post a position with Pro Diversity Network, ZipRecruiter, and Infinity Group Job sites. And that's great, but, you know, sometimes, you know, there's an opportunity to use another source for employees, and that is just asking someone, do you know anyone who'd be interested in this, this position? And I think that's how positions of this sort normally are filled, so.
Yeah, the, the ones that are listed are generally the minimum amount of ones that we use, and often cases when we're talking about professional positions, we do advertise widely in professional journals, associations, industry, other industry sources. So, yeah, sure, word of mouth is also a legitimate way to do it as well.
Okay. Any other questions? So I will move that we authorize the filling of the following nine positions in the Public Works Department. Assistant Civil Engineer, Senior Landscape Planner/Architect, Senior Office Assistant, Motor Equipment Repair Person, two vacancies for the Motor Equipment Operator Two, Laborer, and a Utility Craftsperson, two vacancies. All those in favor, please say aye. Select Person Franco.
Aye.
Select Person Heller.
Aye.
Select Person Green.
Aye.
Select Person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we have Gateway East. Mr. Viola, you've been here a lot on Gateway East.
Good evening. Joe Viola, Assistant Director for Community Planning. As the Board will recall, the Gateway East project requires a $1 million construction match from the Town of Brookline. And as you know, Children's Hospital, through the redevelopment of two through, two through four Brookline Place, provided $750,000 toward that sum. And most recently, via May town meeting, town meeting members appropriated an additional $250,000 via Warren Article 12 to fill that gap. These two funding sources meet the town's $1 million construction match. Prior to Mastat's projected August advertisement date, the town is now being asked to execute a non-participating work agreement. This non-participating work agreement puts forth a number of construction-related items with a value of approximately $1 million that the town will be responsible for over the course of the project. In order to meet Mastat's project advertisement deadline, we're requesting that the Board authorize the use of this, the $1 million in town construction match funds to meet that obligation, and also to improve, to approve and authorize the Chair to execute this non-participating work agreement between the town and Mastat. And essentially, this will formally pledge the town's construction match to Mastat for the Gateway East project. As my memo notes, Mastat will use these funds to pay for the town's share of project costs over the course of the project, as shown in the list of pay items that were included as an appendix to the agreement you saw in your packet. All requisitions will be reviewed by Public Works Engineering Staff, and obviously they'll make their way to Commissioner Pappas' surgeon's desk for approval before they're paid. So I don't know if there are any questions. It's a three-part vote. Happy to explain any part of those.
Okay. So this is basically a housekeeping item. These are funds we had expected to use for this very purpose, and this is the legal vehicle to actually commit the funds and commit the town's participation in the project. So pretty straightforward, though there's a lot of words.
And just continuing on that theme, a million dollars seems like a lot of money. Three-quarters of that actually has been negotiated into some of the other projects in the area, in compliments, again, to our Chair and to former Select Person Ken Goldstein, who really negotiated, again, that $750,000 for Children's Hospital, both for the demolition of the bridge, but also for carrying this forward. And I think the fact that, that we're here tonight, committing effectively $250,000 in unallocated funds to this is a testament to their foresight.
This was in, it's funny, this piece of it was negotiated, I think it was my first year as a Select Board Member. It's one of the first things I worked on. So it takes a while for it to trickle through the process and actually get things going and shovels in the ground. So it's, we're looking at going out to bid this fall, right?
Going out to bid in August. I don't have an exact date, but the bid packet should be going out in August.
August is here.
Late August.
Okay.
I think August 17th is when the ad was gonna be released, so we're, we're coming up quickly.
Okay, wow. Getting close, so, and potentially shovels in the ground in the spring-ish?
Spring of 2019, right.
Okay, wow. And also happening at that site is the two Brookline Place, there's a lot of steel being erected right now. I think the accounted, the number of stories that are, that have been put in place, and I think the number's up to six. So they've got another two to go. And then shovels have been in the ground at River Road. So this is, this is an exciting time for that part of town. Any other questions, comments? Okay, so I'll offer the following votes. It's three votes. I'll, I'll, three motions, and I'll do them in omnibus fashion. So it's a motion to authorize the use of $1 million in town funds from the following accounts to meet the town's construction match obligation for the Gateway East project, $250,000 from the Gateway East Construction Match Account, and $750,000 from the Gateway East Gift Account from Children's Hospital. I'll also move that we approve and authorize the Chair to execute a non-participating work agreement between the Town of Brookline and the Massachusetts Department of Transportation for the Gateway East project. And lastly, I'll move that we authorize the Commissioner of Public Works to approve requisitions and authorize payments related to the use of the town's construction match funds by Mastat or its contractors. All those in favor of those three motions, please say aye. Select Person Franco.
Aye.
Select Person Heller.
Aye.
Select Person Green.
Aye.
Select Person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Now we have a proclamation regarding Steps to Success. Mr. Wells, this is your first time before us, so why don't you introduce yourself and welcome.
Thank you, Select Board. My name is Tony Wells, and I am a senior advisor with the Steps to Success Program here in Brookline, Mass. I'm here to talk to you all about the Steps to Success Program. It is a nonprofit here in Step, in Brookline, and we work with public housing and BHA to help our low-income and first-generation students have educational equality and equity, helping to bridge the gap between those students that are achieving higher and making sure that our students that are in the low-income and housing have that same equal opportunity for access into not only, you know, all of the resources and all of the things that the public schools here have to offer, but also creating opportunity and equal access to higher education. In my role within the Steps to Success Program, I work with all of our recently graduated high school students, and I provide advocacy and get them connected to resources on campuses. We serve all of the, most of the schools in the Boston area and outside of the Boston area and outside of also the, the state. We have more than 79 students that we currently serve in various colleges and universities, two-year and four-year institutions around the state and outside of the state. We currently have students in Washington, DC, attending American University and attending Howard University, and we just had a recent graduate from Washington State. So we had a student go all the way to the other side of the country, which was great, and she did extremely well and is doing extremely well.
Did you have an opportunity to visit her?
That is something that I hope to have, have happen one day, especially with some of the students that will be going to the West Coast again. Right now, we're not at that level where I can travel to the other side, but definitely looking forward to that as we grow. But I think one of the important things that brought me here tonight is to make sure that all of our students, you know, all of the children and all of the students in Brookline have that opportunity to have equal access to all resources and make sure that they are on a track to be successful, because we want to help break that cycle of poverty so that they know that there is support, not only with the program Steps to Success, whereas we're working with students from fourth grade all the way through college. Because what I do is I actually go to the schools, except for the ones out of the state, travel to these schools, making sure that students are, you know, have all of the resources they need to be successful in college. And I'm very proud to say that we had a really good level of, of students who graduated this year. We had 12 students to graduate college, and some have gone on to graduate school, and we have some students that are now, you know, entering that phase of their freshman year. So if you can understand, it's a tiring work to make sure everybody has financial aid, to make sure that everyone is prepared to start their freshman year in college. And so literally just came here from working with a student, you know, trying to make sure financial aid is right. And if you know anything about doing the FAFSA, it could be a daunting task, and I'm sure you all do. And so that's one of the reasons, and many other reasons, that we have Steps to Success, because I wanted to be a household name here in the Town of Brookline, being that it's been in its inception since 2001. And I want everyone to know about, you know, what we're doing and the kinds of services that we're providing to our low-income, first-generation families here in Brookline. And so I want on that day that we're having in this month, August the 28th, at Clark Park on 195 Cypress, we're gonna have Stepping Back to School Day celebration. It's kind of a twofold celebration where we are celebrating all of our students and we're celebrating our families, we're celebrating staff members that have worked with the camps that we have during the summer, our AmeriCorps volunteers, and all of those individuals just to come together and, you know, to invite the Town of Brookline also to come out on August the 28th at 5:00 PM at Clark Park. And so my vision, because this is the third year that we've had the program, and it used to be party in the park, now we call it stepping back to school, trying to revamp and refurbish and give it a new and shiny look. And so I thought of, you know, why not make it a day in the Town of Brookline? Because we want your support, and we invite all of you, the Select Board, to come out or at least have a great representative to come and read the proclamation if it is approved for the Steps to Success Stepping Back to School Day. And so that is why I'm here.
Well, I'll, I'll make sure at least one of us is there.
Oh, that would be great.
Yeah, I'd like to volunteer for that.
Okay.
I remember when I was in high school, a similar program, and that, sort of, very vaguely similar program, sort of helped me identify and get into the college that I went to. It was a settlement house in Philadelphia, friends' neighborhood house, but they did many of the things that you're talking about.
Oh, nice.
So that's, you know, it's near and dear to my heart, so.
Oh, great, great.
Okay.
Thank you.
So you'll have at least one of us, probably more, I suspect. So you'll have at least one of us, probably more, I suspect.
Oh, that would be great.
Especially since it's in our neighborhood. Assuming I'm in town, I'll be there.
Oh, great. Thank you.
So let me...let me read this proclamation, since it's saying some really good things. "Whereas the mission of Steps to Success is to build upon the aspirations, skills of the young people we work with, and to enhance educational opportunities for students from low-income families in order to defeat the cycle of poverty. Whereas since Steps to Success official launched in 2001, the partnership with the Brookline Schools, Brookline Housing Authority, the Brookline Community Foundation, along with the aid of a six-year federal grant, began as a response to the alarming rate of low-income students in Brookline pursuing higher education, which at the time was between 30% and 50%, in comparison with the town average of 90%. And whereas by the fall of 2006, Steps to Success eliminated the college matriculation gap between low- and high-income Brookline students, with 90% of Step students attending two- and four-year institutions. In 2009, the College Success Initiative program was established to ensure that our students complete their post-secondary education, and currently 88% of the students are on track to graduate college within six years, higher than the national average. And now, therefore be it resolved that we, the select board of the town, do hereby designate, what's Saturday in August, Steps to Success Day celebrate...as Step...Steps to Success Day Celebration, it's a mouthful. Thereby demonstrating our support of Steps to Success presence in the Brookline public schools, and the commitment to equal access to higher education for first-generation and low-income students. And the graduation rate, it just hits me in the face.
Yes.
Eighty-eight percent.
Yes.
One thing that's not in the proclamation that I think deserves to be mentioned and put on the record is sort of the other bookend work that Steps to Success does. We talked a little bit about the College Success Initiative, which is so important. It's not just about getting young people into college, it's making sure they succeed in college.
Yes.
But one of the things that most impresses me about Steps to Success is the work that they do with younger children. It's about college-going identity, getting them on a track where they see themselves going to college, and have the academic credentials and the classroom experience to get on that trajectory and remain on that trajectory through high school and then beyond. So it's a sort of a wraparound...
Absolutely.
...program, and I think that's the right approach. So compliments to you and your colleagues for realizing that and affecting that.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'll move that we accept and approve this proclamation. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is the 2018 Climate Action Plan. Ms. Morelli.
So are we going to vote on this?
Good evening.
It wasn't in our package.
It was at our place.
It was at our place.
So...
We can vote it another night if you want to.
I mean, we should agree at first.
Well, could I just make a...first of all, Maria Morelli, Senior Planner, Planning Department. One of the things I wanted to emphasize in the memo that I gave you is that you don't need to delve into and study the contents of the plan. The point of the plan is really to provide...it compiles best practices that are really recommended for municipalities across the nation. So it's really a foundation for discussions with stakeholders. It is not an endorsement of any particular item or any funding or implementation of any items, if that makes sense. And I think if I go into my presentation, it might be a little clear that it's really just a foundation for some of the things that we're scoping out, and not...none of this is in stone. Okay.
Okay, go for it.
All right. Let me just...okay, so I'm here, obviously. We've revised this climate action plan in a major way, and in particular, our greenhouse gas emissions reduction goal is actually more aggressive than it has been in past years, and I'll explain why. But even more importantly, there's a lot of momentum right now. Currently, across departments, we're already acting on initiatives that really make Brookline a sustainability leader, which I'm really delighted to give you some highlights and some examples of what we're doing. And first, I do want to acknowledge the hard work of the Brookline Climate Action Committee, which is chaired by select person Nancy Heller and Wernaloe, and there's several members here this evening on a nice August night. Members of the public who attend every meeting, including our subcommittee meetings, even if they're at 8:00 in the morning, we really do have dedicated community stakeholders. And again, I mentioned town staff. I work in the planning department, but I probably spend more time in the building department, DPW, public health, and that really, I think, underscores the momentum that's growing on across all functional areas in town hall. What I am asking for is the select board to adopt the climate action plan. Moreover, the objective, to prioritize the planning to achieve zero emissions by 2050, town and community-wide, and to fill the town meeting resolution that was passed last year, to sign the town on as a non-state actor to the Paris Climate Accord. Okay? The whole point of having a climate action plan is that we implement actions to build a resilient community. And what that means is that we work toward reducing climate-changing, greenhouse gas emissions, and a reliance on fossil fuels. In correlation, we also want to protect public health, especially vulnerable populations, infrastructure and property in the event of extreme weather due to climate change. As I mentioned at the onset, this is a tool for communicating priorities and the policy that we have for reducing greenhouse gas emissions amongst town staff and community stakeholders. There is a lot of progress that's being done in individual departments, but we really do need a cohesive policy. We want to ensure that any decisions we make are also against our sustainability goals. How do the decisions we make about design in the public way? Are we incorporating low-impact development techniques when we can? Measuring that against our sustainability goals means that we're doing this in a coherent and consistent fashion. And of course, tracking and sharing our progress is a big piece of this, and that's something that I want to do in a more systematic fashion, so that we can engage everyone and also update you accordingly. So the select board has done this before, going back to 2002. Then, the greenhouse gas emissions goal was 20% below 1995 levels by 2010. And then in 2012, there was another revision of the climate action plan with a slightly different greenhouse gas emissions goal. In 2015, that 2012 plan was amended, and that was to have a more aggressive goal in line with the Global Warming Solutions Act in Massachusetts, which is 80% below 1990 levels, or actually 2008 levels by 2050. We are recommending zero emissions by 2050, which means no reliance on fossil fuels. And just before I get to why that's important, I also want to acknowledge that Brookline has signed on to the Metro Mayor's Carbon Neutral 2050 through MAPC. We are a Green Communities designation or designee. A town meeting, again, did vote unanimously, I believe, to sign Brookline on to the Paris Accord Agreement, which is to limit global temperature rise to no more than 1.5 degrees Celsius. And that's over, or over pre-industrial levels. Recently, the Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs did grant our Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Designation, and we are a member of the Metro Mayor's Climate Preparedness Task Force. So what adoption means, of course, no reliance on fossil fuel, is predicated on three big moves. That is, first, high energy efficiency in tight building envelopes, reliance on renewable energy sources like solar and wind, and then, when you have that in place, electric building systems and vehicles. This isn't as linear as I'm making it sound. We do a little bit of each right now, but if you were to move to an all-electric building or electric vehicles, you would want to ensure that your energy source is not going to be coal or natural gas. Obviously, you're going to want to have renewable energy in place to rely on that. And it's the same thing with if you have, if you're relying on renewable energy resources, you don't want to have unchecked consumption of your energy use in your buildings. And that's why we talk about three big moves toward no reliance on fossil fuels, high energy efficiency, then renewable resources, and going to all-electric systems. Okay, a little bit of the science, this is based on science, and this is from Dr. Richard Rosen, who is a technical advisor to the Climate Action Committee. The Global Warming Solutions Act, that 80% reduction is out of date. And that the reason why, if all-new emissions of carbon dioxide stop today, global warming will still continue to increase for about 100 years. We have a remaining carbon budget of about 400 gigatons of carbon dioxide to keep that average temperature increase limited to 1.5 degrees Celsius. Okay, the world currently emits 40 gigatons of carbon dioxide a year, and about 50 gigatons of carbon dioxide equivalent. So if Brookline wants to adhere to the Paris Climate Agreement, it must achieve zero emissions sometime between 2030 and 2052. We also refer people who are interested. The US government has a climate science special report, as recent as 2017, on globalchange.gov. The plan itself is made up of two big areas. One is mitigation, which is the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions, and we cover six strategic areas: greater energy efficiency, increased renewable energy, improved transportation options, reduced waste, and enhanced tree canopies in open space. The other piece is how prepared are we to respond to extreme weather events that affect public health, property, and infrastructure due to climate change? And as you can see, this covers every...all our core services, every functional area in-town government. The work that we did with Brookline's vulnerability assessment last year actually encompassed a working group with representatives of all of these departments. You're not meant to read this, but this is just to let you know that we break down these strategies by color on our website. We want to make this as accessible as possible to people. One thing I do want to pause and say, that again, we're providing you with objective information about effective actions one could take across these functional areas. This is not to suggest that any one action is more important or is mutually exclusive to another. The whole point is each action item will have several criteria. We're building a functional area like public health, like economic development, and we're treating these action items like business propositions. So what do you do with the business proposition? You scope out what the resources, the budget will be. Who are the people involved? What is that staff workload? How does that fit in with our comprehensive plan? And other policies: trees, bicycles, affordable housing, et cetera. So we are trying to, you know, wrap true operations around this, and therefore, I just want to assure you that you're not endorsing any particular items. What you are supporting is that we work together and start prioritizing the planning for zero emissions by 2050. One of the things that we are hoping to do this year that we haven't done before is include the climate action plan as an element in our comprehensive plan. So to give this teeth, you need to have it integrated into policy documents. It needs to be integrated, reflected in our bylaws, in our general bylaws, stormwater zoning. Currently, we really don't have any climate action goals really reflected in any of our policy documents and regulations. So again, to give this some teeth, we're going to be starting that conversation where we do policy audits and see where there is room for including these important items. Okay, so the fun stuff, where I get to give you examples of how progress is being made, and how Brookline is actually a sustainability leader. And I don't say that lightly. We're getting a lot of attention from the state, from DOE-R. They're following us closely because of the great work that we are doing. And I do want to acknowledge, I don't want to take any credit away from the people who are doing this work. In greater energy efficiency, we're going to be looking at, of course, buildings. Buildings contribute a lot to greenhouse gas emissions. One of the exciting things that we're working on right now are seeing if we can achieve net zero on our new school projects. And so Brookline High School is a really excellent and exciting case study that I'm going to give you an overview. We have the Driscoll School renovation. This is an example of Charlie Simmons, who's the Director of Facilities, who's already thinking this way on his own without a climate action plan, and really opted to have this renovation be all-electric. And that's an exciting thing, because you're not seeing retrofits convert to all-electric. That's another interesting case study that we'll be able to share with our commercial community. We have some of the best energy conservation measures in our facilities. All of our streetlights have been converted to LED. That makes us eligible for rebates, and also lowers our kilowatt-per-hour rate. And don't forget that, I believe it was last year, there was a resolution that was passed virtually unanimously, setting energy goals for new municipal buildings. So a little bit about Brookline High School. We are going into the design development stage. This consists of a new building at Cypress Street and a very large addition of the STEM wing on the campus. When we think about green, we tend to think about premiums, and this is...these are some of the myths that we get to dispel with an actual bona fide project that is going through design right now. Some of the myths that we try to dispel are that capital costs are higher for a green building. Actually, this is a high-performance building, meaning we have extreme energy efficiency, still a very comfortable building, a building that you're going to want to be in, but we employ energy modeling to ensure that we look at all of the different systems as an integrated whole-building design package. So you don't have to have the Cadillac of, say, HVAC. You have just what you need for your energy goals. And so probably, and this is what we'll be getting into in a report to the select board in November, is an example of how this building, this particular project, even though it's a high-performance building, the construction costs per square foot are on par, maybe even better than a traditional building. Operating costs, because we are lowering energy costs, we are lowering operating costs that can be put toward programming. Solar panels are...the prices are coming down. In general, the rule of thumb is a 20-year simple payback, and that's simply because solar install...or solar developers are getting those 20-year loans from the financing industry. However, with incentives applied, the simple payback is going to come way, way down. One of the things I'm doing is getting some technical assistance to go through under the state's SMART program, which replaces SREC II for solar incentives, to explain what we'll be getting with solar. The solar piece is actually a separate project. It's not part of this phase, but it is something that we're planning for, because we really don't want to...we can't tack that on at the end. And let's not forget the utility incentives, which run in the six figures because of the high-performance path that we are choosing. A little bit about the numbers, because I think they really are fantastic. One of the energy goals is energy use intensity, and that's a new concept for us. We look at that because we want to look at per square foot, how much energy we're using. We use this metric because we can compare... We use this metric because we can compare buildings of different sizes. And this was, this goal in the resolution was between 25 and 30, 30 being the minimum, striving for 25. And as you can see, we've really hit it with the Cypress building. The STEM building, being a technology building, is going to use more energy, and therefore it doesn't meet that criterion. LEED 4 just came out. It's much more stringent than the version 3. And right now, we think we're on the cusp of LEED gold for both Cypress and the STEM. Now, if this were version 3, you'd probably have platinum buildings. The energy cost savings over the ASHRAE benchmark is 37% for the Cypress building and 26.5% for the STEM building. If we were to look at the latest version of the Stretch Code, you know that Brookline is a stretch, has adopted the Energy Stretch Code, that tells another great story. So it's almost 30% for the Cypress building and 20% for the STEM building. Reduction of greenhouse gas emissions, again, that's something that we don't measure, but we should. And you can see it's, you know, over 40% for the Cypress building and over 25% for the STEM building. We are allocating a portion of the roof for solar on both, and that will yield estimated value of renewable energy yearly, over $25,000 for the Cypress building and almost $20,000 for the STEM building. And there, the percentage of the energy use is really respectable. Okay. Other ways that we're leading by example, or actually, not leading by example, but things that we actually want to focus on, that's mistitled. Even though we have great energy conservation measures, we still have to look at users' behavior, and that's plug load. So it's really, again, helpful to have a policy where people are cognizant of how their behavior affects those metrics. Tracking our metrics in Portfolio Manager is something that I've discussed with Mark Sakko and Charlie Simmons and Dan Bennett in the Building Department, because we'll be able to attract energy use and greenhouse gas emissions much more systematically. That does require centralizing our electrical and water bills. Other things that we are hoping to do are participate in some utility demand response pilots, which actually, if you meet some of those thresholds, you can get some funding in return. And our greenhouse gas inventory, tracking what we use not only as a town, but community-wide. I think the last inventory was done in 2010. Some of the initiatives that we're working on for the community, we do want to understand some building blocks for achieving net zero, and that is, you know, relying on studies for greenhouse gas emission targets by building type and converting existing to all-electric. Energy upgrades, a lot of the commercial industry is not actually taking advantage of utility incentives. Other opportunities are lenders can provide some incentives for pre-development, you know, scoping out what sustainability design can be incorporated into a project. Do keep in mind that green building mandates are not allowed by the Attorney General, so the best that we can do are provide guidelines to the public. About a year ago, I came before you to launch Brookline Green Electricity, and it has been a year. And even with a really, you know, aggressive 25% default product, we have a 94% participation rate overall in the program. The majority, over 90%, is in the default. And those who are opting up to 100% is increasing steadily. We have almost 600 ratepayers who have opted for the 100% product, which really is a standout across any municipality who has AG+. One of the things that we've done a few years back is require that solar, that Newtown Buildings be solar-ready. And we also have two net metering agreements. We're researching for the fall. In time, our municipal load electricity contract will be up, so we're just pursuing what adding more renewables will look like. We have about three pages of options that we want to study and present to management and the Select Board. You also remember Blue Wave, which was the developer that we were going to be working with to install solar? Sure. Okay, I'm just going to move ahead. We can talk about, one of the things I want to talk about with transportation is we have an opportunity to attract investment in EV installation. We're looking at Beacon Street. It's merely, what we're scoping out is a pilot and with several partners. EverSource has a $45 million make-ready infrastructure upgrade program. We'd like to partner with two other investors. One is Greenspot, who's interested in, what they do is they install EV CarShare and EVs in general, or Level 2s, and Electrify America. We're simply going to be applying so they might consider, and then we can bring something back to you for your consideration. We're not signing on to anything, obviously, without any debate, coordination with other initiatives for Beacon Street, bike lanes, tree planting, parking spaces. So that will be fully vetted, but it is an exciting possible partnership. Okay, just moving ahead, some of the things that we're doing on the policy side with our enhanced tree canopy, one thing I do want to state is that trees do have an economic value. One thing we did in our vulnerability assessment, we were able to calculate the annual value of the carbon storage our Brookline's tree canopy provides. It exceeds $8 million. It has a role in avoiding runoff, millions of gallons of stormwater runoff a year. And recently, we amended our stormwater management bylaw to really put the brakes on indiscriminate tree removal on private property. So, and we will be going further with that by just having some reinforcements on the zoning side. On the adaptation side, I just wanted to skip to one notable thing. Because we have our MVP designation, we are eligible for $400,000 of grant funding, and that will be available twice yearly. So we just got awarded a $75,000 project. We are going to be focusing on a policy audit for climate resiliency on all of, across all of our bylaws. And we're going to be planning for the next round, looking at actual engineering projects and MS4 compliance. We will be holding some outreach and events. There's going to be one September 15th with Mass Energies Drive Electric and Brookline Day, of course. And then we're going to be reaching out neighborhood associations, the commercial industry and businesses, hopefully working with students and parents through the fall and winter, talking about our climate action plan and resources available.
Okay, this is very comprehensive and is quite a lot to process. What I'm going to suggest, being that we got this about an hour before we came up here.
Don't read that fast.
Right. Is we hold this for a vote and also have an opportunity to read this so we can ask questions.
Sure.
So we'll schedule this for early September and then get this approved.
Glad to. Thank you.
I would like to say that the Climate Action Committee has been considering this for several months. We've worked very hard. Maria has worked tremendously hard, and I want to thank her for all that she has done. This is a tremendous effort. It's a huge step up from our previous, from our previous plans. And I do think that the very least we could do tonight is to vote on being a non-state actor in the, accepting the Paris Agreement per the resolution of town meeting.
Okay, that's fair.
I think that that's something that we should be doing. My view is that we should be adopt, we should be supportive of this plan. It is, A, the right thing to do in terms of getting us on a path to zero emissions, which is so important for our planet, but it's also economically makes sense. And every time our staff looks into one of these areas, they're looking at, you know, are there grants available? What's it going to do to our energy? How, so it's a mix, really, of trying to get toward our goal, but at the same time, keeping in mind the impact on the town. So, you know, I would hope that we would at least vote on the, on the Paris Agreement and making sure that we're a part of that as town meeting specified in the spring.
Yeah, that's, I'm okay with that.
So that's not, that's not the item.
But the problem is that we, it wasn't noticed. The way this was noticed is question of voting to adopt the Climate Action Plan, prioritize planning for zero emissions, and approve this middle Climate Action Plan to the Climate Registry.
Carbon.
Carbon Registry, I'm sorry. Was, is adopting the non-state actor a piece of the Climate Action?
Right, so one, yes, one condition is to submit the cap.
So we can, we can accept that part of the Climate Action Plan tonight and then meet these, the notice requirements.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, we have to vote. So the motion will be to...
Is that in the Climate Action Plan? I thought that was a town meeting resolution.
It is a town meeting resolution. Is it referenced in the Climate Action Plan?
I remember seeing in one of the slides.
No, it's, that's, that's not in the Climate Action Plan. These are, the Climate Action Plan is about specific actions to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Just signing on to the Paris Climate Accord just shows your resolve.
Your intent.
Your intent, yes.
And town meeting voted to sign on. Do, and do we need to reaffirm that vote?
I believe there is a policy to, that staff simply doesn't, I mean, staff is committed to fulfilling resolutions, but out of courtesy to the Select Board.
Right, right. It's a non-binding resolution. To make it binding on the town, we would have to adopt it, because that's, in effect, the policy recommendation. That we have, just through practice, accepted the Will of Town Meeting to guide us.
In their wisdom.
In their wisdom, right. And in this instance, I think they are wise. I kind of, I want to do it, I'm just...
It wasn't noticed.
It wasn't noticed, so I don't think we can. So we can notice it for next time and just, just vote it. But the select person, Franco, won't be here for the fuller discussion. He's going to be missing the next meeting, so if we're going to have a fuller discussion on the Climate Action Plan, I want to do the meeting after. But we can, we can adopt the resolution that's, because that, the town meeting's kind of made that decision for us.
Well, I think it's an important statement to make.
Right.
And, you know, I'm hoping that not long after that, we will adopt the Climate Action Plan.
Right.
And send that along with it. But I do think that it's important to send these messages to other municipalities in the state, to other states in the Union, to the federal government, and to the world, that we're on board with getting this done. We have to.
Right. Out of courtesy to you, I'm really glad to come back and answer your questions, especially about signing on, since it's only a few more weeks. We can do it in a comprehensive fashion.
Okay.
And I don't think we'll miss a beat, really.
Right, okay. And I, I don't, I don't think there's a reluctance from the board to do this, it's just, we want to...
Absolutely.
Make sure our eyes are dotted and we're voting on something that has very broad policy implications for the town. We should know what we're voting on.
Yeah, and I don't have any reluctance in general. I think as a matter of principle, if you're going to ask us to vote on something, we have to read it.
Sure.
If we don't read it and we vote on it, it's useless in being persuasive to other towns, to other states, to other people.
Understood.
And, you know, being able to read something as detailed as this gives us an opportunity to understand it and be able to talk about it in the community intelligently. And it also gives us an opportunity to identify questions that we have. For example, if we're going to make our buildings all-electric, what are the implications regarding the security of our electrical grid? That's in the news these days. If we're going to make all of our buildings solar-ready, what's the impact on a school building, for example, where we want to put a playground on the roof? So, I mean, there are a lot of questions that, you know, aren't questioning the plan itself, but you really need to be answered and understood if this is going to be an effective process.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. So it's now about 8 o'clock. I know we noticed a license discussion for 7:45. I, we're probably running about 45 minutes late on that at this point, so I apologize. We have Housing Advisory Board.
Hi, good evening. I'm Virginia Bullock. I am the senior housing planner for the town of Brookline, and we wanted to take some time tonight to update the Select Board on some of the regional housing production initiatives, particularly focusing on the Metro Mayor's Housing Production Task Force and how Brookline is working to address the problem of housing affordability with other municipalities throughout the region. I'm going to just give a quick introduction, and then Jennifer Rade and Roger Blood from our Housing Advisory Board are going to share a little bit more in-depth about what's been going on and what we're doing here in Brookline to address these issues. So, as you recall, in 2016, we adopted a housing production plan that outlined our housing needs, goals, and strategies, which was developed with a thorough and robust community engagement process and adopted unanimously by the Select Board before it was certified by the state. Our housing production goals include not only reaching a minimum of 10% housing affordability within Brookline, but making sure that we continue to provide diverse set of housing options for residents into the future. Since we adopted the Housing Production Plan two years ago, housing prices have continued to rise at alarming rates. The result is that Metro Boston is now the third most expensive housing market in the nation after San Francisco and New York. A large part of this problem is due to two factors. One is that the rate of housing production in Massachusetts is one of the lowest in the country. And secondly, a significant portion of job growth in Massachusetts since the 2008 recession has taken place within Metro Boston, putting significant pressure on our existing housing stock and resulting in skyrocketing housing prices for both rental and homeownership. This directly impacts who can continue to live in our communities, impacting not only low-income households, but seniors, young professionals, and working families, and pushing many households further and further out of Brookline and out of the Metro Boston area as they seek affordable, affordable housing options. Governor Baker has recognized that if we do not actively address this issue, our economy will be negatively impacted in the long run as a region. Over the past several years, there have been several state and regional initiatives that have been developed to address this affordability crisis through the promotion of increased housing production in the Metro Boston area. Brookline has been actively monitoring and participating in these initiatives as it seeks to achieve the housing goals outlined in our Housing Production Plan. to achieve the housing goals outlined in our Housing Production Plan. These initiatives include the Governor's Housing Choice Initiative, which seeks to expand the state's housing supply by 135,000 units between now and 2025, through both funding and zoning reform initiatives designed to encourage housing production. The state also recently adopted a $1.8 billion affordable housing bill to increase affordable housing production in the Commonwealth. And earlier this year, Mass Housing, the state's Housing Finance Agency, announced a Planning for Housing Production Program to provide municipalities with funding and technical assistance to increase housing production. In January, the Metro Mayor's Coalition, comprised of fourteen municipalities, including Brookline, launched a Housing Production Task Force to work together to increase housing opportunities in the region. Brookline's been an active participant in this group, and HAB member Jennifer Wright is gonna now give you guys an update on this initiative. After that, Roger Blood will update the board on how we are working remote housing opportunities in Brookline and meet the goals of the Housing Production Plan. We look forward to answering any questions you may have, and to returning later in this year with further updates.
Welcome. Hi.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Jennifer Wright. I'm a Housing Advisory Board member, as you heard. And I'm also with the Town of Arlington as their Director of Planning and Community Development, and also previously worked for the Metropolitan Area Planning Council as their Chief Housing Planner, actually, for nine years, so have a variety of perspectives to offer.
You know a little about this.
Yes, you do, that's right. You have met me. But I have different perspectives to bring to the table on this, both as a local official serving on the committee for my, my employer, but of course, bringing to it how it impacts Brookline, and then of course, the experience of working with MAPC, should you have any questions about any of those things. So as you already heard from Virginia, the Metro Mayor's Coalition established, established this regional housing task force initiative to really go through a number of different issues, and tackle an issue that does not just exist, obviously, at the local level, but really has regional implications for all of us. And you already heard about the, the numbers and the issues around construction, and the pace of construction in the region. We haven't been kept, keeping pace with construction goals or housing production goals for years, actually. Despite the fact that we see a lot of production happening, there's still much more to do, and particularly in the urban core communities. So the Coalition, really, and the task force emerged to address the housing crisis through this collaborative, and also through a mutually supportive effort. The focus is actually on achieving housing production, to be very specific about it. And along the way, they're, you know, trying to set goals, develop resources and educational materials that we can, you know, that would serve to educate people in local communities, but also within the region. So those materials will be able to help us to implement goals both regionally and locally. So the task force is overseeing this process, but has mostly been meeting since January to really develop the first part of this process, which has been around figuring out the engagement process, literally. Who are we engaging, who are we going to talk with, what will be the public engagement rollout in any way, what kind of materials are needed, the communications plan and strategy, but also then focusing a great deal of attention and time on data gathering and analysis. And that has involved MAPC requesting a lot of information from local communities about building trends, what they're planning, what's under construction, how much affordable housing is being produced, where is it located, what are some of the planned areas for potential and priority development. So they're looking at this at the local level, but then also trying to formulate a pattern and what it might look like regionally, so that ultimately, they can set goals. And at the moment, it's really an aspirational regional production goal, but eventually, there will be some more firm numbers to provide, both at the regional level and then at the local level. This would, of course, be synthesized with the local Housing Production Plan. And for that, I ask if you would be interested in having a more, you know, robust presentation about the data and about the information behind this planning process. I think that could be maybe for a future meeting, of course, not for this evening.
Right, thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, no, definitely, not tonight. So it is a one-and-a-half-year effort, actually, so we are, as I stated, really at this midpoint where they're gathering data. There should be a rollout, there will be a regional forum. All that stuff will be forthcoming, and of course, you would be notified of those steps along the way. There's also been one, one key piece that I just wanted to share is an adoption of housing principles, and I'm just gonna tell you the, the high level, what that covers. It's everything from engagement, production, preservation, as in the small P of preserving affordability and affordable housing, not historic preservation, affordability, stability, so making sure that people have access to housing also, fair housing, diversity, housing design, location, and neighborhood choice. So it's pretty comprehensive, and also reflective of the diversity of the Metro Mayor's Coalition. And I'm very excited that I get to participate, so glad to answer any questions about it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Blood, welcome.
First of all, thank you, Jenny. We're thrilled to have you as our newest member of the HAB, as we get into subjects such as this. I think the Select Board can see that we're gonna have a good resource at our, at our level. The, as you heard, the Housing Production Plan, as it, as the town has adopted, and now we're, we're doing various things to, to implement it specifically, not only gave us numerical targets to achieve for certain thresholds and rewards, but also strategies and goals, and even very specific focus, ability to focus on certain parts of the town, the so-called opportunity corridors for where we want to see affordable housing developed, and also several themes, the main ones being the, the mixed-income housing and mixed-use housing. And the, the HAB is, is undertaking an initiative, among several others, of working more with the, with the EDAB because of mixed-use housing. It means that we have another, another board that we find we can probably work very constructively with. I think it might be worth taking a real quick pause on, on these two words, you're hearing a lot of "housing production," because on reflection, it, they really mean two very different things at the same time, in this, this new subject that we're, we're talking about. Our Housing Production Plan, and, and at the HAB level, we think can mean affordable housing, and the production of affordable housing. But that's really a subset of, whether it's Mayor Walsh, or the Governor, or what you've been hearing on the Mayor's, Metro Mayor's Committee, housing production is really total housing production, just the creation of units. So there's, there's really two levels, and so whenever you, whenever you hear that term, it might be good to think or ask, which, which one or both are, are people talking about? Here in, here in Brookline, just a quick reference to several of the specific initiatives that are, that fall in line with, with these goals. We have JCHE that we are very pleased is, you know, about to begin construction for 62 units of mission-based elderly service-supported senior housing.
And they just got funding.
Yes, yes.
Very exciting.
Yes, early, first, first bite, I believe.
Yeah. And that's 100% affordable?
It's 100% affordable, and, and that's the way, that's the best way for units to go on the inventory, as opposed to the, the 40B method of counting. We have the, the committee that Select Board Member Hamilton is on, leading for the Kent Station Street. Hopefully, a creation of some further senior housing on a town-owned property. Within a general initiative, we are working on, and the HAB has been since last fall, two potential zoning articles that would advance these goals. One, to approve the, and authorize of accessory dwelling units in single-family homes. That's probably the least physically intrusive form of housing production that one could possibly think of. And second, to strengthen our inclusionary zoning housing bylaw in a, in a balanced way, where we hopefully can extract some more affordable housing resources, both units and trust funds, without killing the golden goose regarding the development of these projects. We're actively partnering with the, with the BHA for some significant preservation initiatives that they're taking on six of their properties. And as I mentioned, also partnering with, with EDAB, looking at mixed-use developments. The most live one at the moment, and it's a, and it's a big one, is the, the Waldo-Durgan Street mixed-use development of housing, affordable housing, and hotel and retail space.
I guess the, the one thing to think about, you know, a town meeting has visited with accessory units, I guess it was five, six, seven years ago.
It was actually a dozen.
Really?
I thought it was a half a dozen, too.
Oh, my gosh.
But time is flying.
Wow. So, and, and that didn't pass back then, so we, we should think about, are there any lessons from that exercise to help guide us? I, I think, too, perhaps attitudes have changed, the housing market has changed. I don't, I suspect 12 years ago, gosh, that long, Boston wasn't the third most expensive, it was expensive, but not quite at the level we're at now.
Well, at that time, and your, your point is well-taken, Mr. Chair, the, then, the, the vote was several votes short of a two-thirds majority.
Right.
And this entire effort is triggered and aligned with the Governor's so-called Housing Choice legislation, which disappointingly did not make it at midnight the other night, which would only require a simple majority for the, a similar article to pass this time around.
Assuming that passes.
But even if it does, I mean, we should still keep pushing, because presumably learn something.
I, I think one of, one of the things that happened last time is, if I recall, if memory serves me right, it was late at night, and it was one of the last articles in that town meeting, and people wanted to go home, so. And it was getting close to midnight, if I recall, so. It was, it was a, there was another warrant article that perhaps, that also failed because of some of the same dynamics. It was a zoning warrant article on the River Road parcel that we now have a hotel going up. Maybe it's a good thing that one didn't pass, because it would have upzoned it for a convenience store use, and we might still have a gas station and convenience store if that one, if that one passed, instead of the, the hotel that's, that's going in there now. So, any questions, comments for Mr. Blood or Ms. Wright? Or Ms. Bullock?
I just want to say, to thank you to Virginia. You know, the Metro Mayor sits around and develops these lofty goals, but the planning staff, the housing staff of the respective communities really has been working very hard, developing a lot of information, cooperation with MAPC. I just want to say, say thank you to Virginia for her efforts.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We have two interviews for the Housing Advisory Board, and the first one up is So why don't you introduce yourself, and you have quite a background in affordable housing?
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm Jonathan Klein. I'm honored to be invited to be considered for the Housing Advisory Board. I'm a ten-year resident in Brookline now. I moved from Jamaica Plain when it was time to downsize. I joke with my friends that I've kind of done it a little backwards. I have come here to pay taxes to put all my friends' kids through school, so. We live at the corner of...
We love you.
Happy to be here. My professional career has been dedicated to affordable housing as a lawyer. I've worked in both private practice at a large firm many years ago, Brown-Rudnick, Creed &amp; Gessmer. I've worked at The Community Builders, which is a major regional nonprofit that builds, owns, and operates affordable housing. That was during the 90s. In the 2000s, I left there and formed my own firm, known as Klein-Hornig LLP. It's a firm that is dedicated exclusively to affordable housing and community development, based in Boston and Washington. It now has about 30 lawyers. And then, in, to the surprise of many people, in about 2012, I left that firm, although I left my name behind at it, to go back to Community Builders to be back in the nonprofit sector, where I currently work as General Counsel and Senior Vice President. So I've had a long career in affordable housing. I've found it a fascinating and challenging and fulfilling vocation, and I'm delighted to be invited to participate in a, in a volunteer way in, in Brookline to advance those same goals. And I'm happy to say more or answer any questions as you like.
Does Community Builders do any work in Brookline? There won't be any conflict issues?
It has not, in, to my knowledge, ever, and doesn't have anything under consideration in Brookline. It certainly would if the opportunity arose, but the opportunity hasn't arisen, and it's not involved in any way with any of the, the current projects that I'm aware of.
Okay, so if, if, assuming you're appointed and an opportunity came, came up, you'd just be aware of the conflict?
I would certainly refuse myself if there was anything that involved them, but I don't expect that to be the case, based on what I know of their pipeline and of Brookline's pipeline.
Right, okay. Any questions?
So in your cover letter, you mentioned that you've worked on affordable housing and community development projects in 14 states and the District of Columbia. What's probably one of the more fascinating things that you've encountered?
Wow. Well, one of the most exciting that you may know about is Charlesview Homes, which is in Brighton. It's 240 units of affordable housing. It is a former, it was a housing preservation project, in a manner of speaking. It, it was a 204-unit project that was located right in Packard's Corner, which was the site that Harvard very much wanted as part of its future development of that area for its new campus. And the housing was about 40 years old, it was pretty tired, it really needed to be revitalized, and we worked with Harvard, and the federal government, and Mass Housing, and DHCD to arrange to do a land swap, to sell that property to Harvard, to use about six and a half acres that Harvard then provided about a half mile away. We got significant funds from Harvard, and did some really very innovative things to, at the time, they were, this has been done since then, but we, I think we were the first ones in the country to actually port the Section 8 contract from that site to the new site, and built a new community of 240 units. It's mixed-income housing, it has some retail space on the ground floor, it accomplished one-for-one replacement of all the affordable units, and rehoused all of the existing residents, and then added some units on top of that. We also then had a second phase, which was 20 units of homeownership housing, that were filled of very important need in that neighborhood for residents who were anxious to have homeownership opportunities as well as rental opportunities, and completed that project, which is called Brighton Mills. So that was challenging, difficult, took 10 years, and I worked on it on both the Klein-Hornig side, when I was their outside lawyer, and on the Community Builders side after I moved over to Community Builders.
Interesting.
So what is the pipeline to Community Builders that apparently is not amenable to Brookline?
Well, the things we're working on in the Boston area that you would know about is that we have a major initiative in Jackson Square, on the Orange Line, where we are partnering with the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Development Corporation and Urban Edge, which are two local CDCs. We have already built 100-unit project there called 225 Center Street.
Oh, I guess my, my real question is...
Okay.
What is it that you do that would be not compatible with a project in Brookline?
Oh, it would be very compatible, it's just projects in, you know, Brookline has a very small amount of land, and very limited development opportunities, and those have not sort of come to our attention. We would be delighted to work in Brookline if there was an opportunity, but no one has come to us with an opportunity, there hasn't been an RFP. We, the one thing I'll say is, we tend to work on larger projects, and so we pretty much have a minimum project size of 50 units or more. So, for example, the Fisher Hill Development is something that I worked on, I represented Atlantic, Atlantic Development, which did that project, but that project, which was, you know, a terrific project, would have been too small for Community Builders to be interested in. Does that address your question?
Yeah, it does, that's my question.
Okay, yeah.
I find zoning to be very mysterious. What have you seen throughout your career of communities that do it well, and communities that... that have not adapted to changing times?
It's a challenge to find communities that do it well, at least as it relates to affordable housing, because affordable housing is sometimes a third rail in zoning. So, I've been involved in challenging zoning situations, both in Massachusetts with 40B, although that was really quite some time ago, and in other communities in, you know, Chicago. We're going through one in Oak Park right now. I guess we've seen that in Washington DC, they have had very forward-looking, you know, zoning and planned unit development areas. I only have a little experience in Cambridge, but my sense is that the inclusionary zoning work that they've done in Cambridge has been very successful and helpful in creating opportunities in a similar kind of congested area. But it's a challenge that I confess I don't have an easy answer to, because it's, it's hard to get right.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much, and you'll be hearing from us pretty shortly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Blood, you're re-upping.
Hoping to.
Okay.
Hoping to.
You're applying to re-up.
Yes.
Okay. So, very briefly, since we're running late.
And we all know you.
And we, we all know you, just, if you can just talk a little about some of the things you might want to have to be working on.
Well, I'm still enjoying it, and it has been a number of years, but it always keeps changing, and it's always something new. There's no, nothing's getting old about it. And, as you may know, I do housing work in foreign developing countries, and I get a lot of pleasure taking Brookline story to those countries and talking about local while working global. And you've heard a moment ago in our prior discussion, some of the specific goals and targets that the HAB is wanting to, wanting to achieve. I've, I've viewed the role, in my more, maybe perhaps more generalist background compared with many of the individual HAB members, who are just as strong as you could imagine. I think they're, they're great and wonderful for the town to have, is while keeping an eye on our, on our mission of production and preservation and advocacy, doing it with an eye towards balancing that particular mission of the HAB with the, with the town's larger community and neighborhood goals and other concerns, and trying to think in a balanced way about issues as they come along. And, and also, it's become very important to me in terms of thinking about the HAB role, having and keeping the very best people. The HAB has a, has an order, a directive, to have a number of different skill sets, and that, that's, that's an important thing for, for the mission to be fulfilled, to have the people to do it and, and be engaged, feeling engaged, and when, if they must leave at certain points, to look back and say, that was, that was worthwhile. So, so I think that's, that's very important. I also feel that attending to relationships between the HAB and, and officials within the town, beginning with you all, but other, other department heads and other boards and commissions, is, is very important on this subject, as well as with outside partners, if you will, and that perhaps the three most important at the moment, if, if, if and as the word applies, is, is the Brookline Housing Authority, JCHE, and Chestnut Hill Realty. So, I would like very much to have the privilege of continuing, and hopefully that's brief enough, and you have my written submission.
Yeah. My experience with the HAB has been quite positive. I view the HAB as a very high-functioning, effective board, and I applaud your leadership of the HAB. I've been working with Roger and other HAB members on a number of projects, and the advice and counsel that Roger and others have given me and this board has been very, very helpful, and has gotten us a lot of, taken us a long way. So, that's, that's great. And Roger's been participating with the Coolidge Corner Study Committee, and has been an integral member of that, that project, and there's some pieces in there that affect affordable housing calculations that might play a key, might be key to bringing some of the mass down that people are objecting to. Whether it'll get, get it to a point where folks are happy with it is another story. It'll help at least a little bit.
I want to echo and actually compliment Mr. Blood. You know, I think you said that the Housing Advisory Board has some of the most distinguished members possible, and I would agree with that. The Alumni Association of Housing Advisors Board is illustrious. Two names that just spring out to me is John Hall, who was, I think, one of the original members of the Housing Advisory Board, and maybe a name familiar to Mr. Klein, Kathy Spiegelman, who had a very distinguished career with some local nonprofits doing development. So, I am happy to have you back on there as an effective recruiter and leader of the group.
I'll just make one quick comment. I had the pleasure of working with Roger Blood and the HAB a few years ago, when I and a neighbor of mine had submitted a warrant article to town meeting, and they effectively turned it into a resolution, which led to the housing production plan, and I think their expertise and management of that was terrific, and I'd like to thank you. I think it's, it resulted in something very good for the town, and hopefully we can meet our goals and get a, get a, the brakes put on some of these projects that are overwhelming. I mean, I'm sure you're aware of what it's doing to Coolidge Corner and that neighborhood, and it's.
One of our broad goals, and hopefully it's supported, is looking ahead beyond the so-called 10%, and the negatives of so-called 40B mandates, and finding ways to reach out, educate and communicate, so that the community will, will support continued additions to affordable housing, even though we may be well over the 10%.
Okay, so I think we need to move on, but thank you, Roger, and Mr. Klein. So, and then you'll be hearing from us shortly, too, Roger. Okay. We have some licensing items, and the first item is the Kosher Wok. Welcome back.
Yes, yes. Good evening. My name is Mei Hui Hu. I, I represent the new corporation, the Kosher Wok Inc. Mr. Taisheng Ying, the only shareholder, 100% shareholder owner, is present here. You remember about six weeks ago, we were here.
We remember.
We were very concerned about the future of the Taim China restaurant, and since then, we have done a few things. First of all, we named it Assistant Manager. She's here also. Her name is Tina Yu. She is, she has been working at the restaurant for 10 years now, even though her English is not, you know, I would say 100% fluent as a native born here in America, but she, with her experience and with her personality and with her contact with patrons, she has no problem taking over the day-to-day operation and with the contact. I think that was one of the concerns that the board had, that, about Mr. Taisheng Ying's English ability. It's not with Tina's help, I think that may ease some of your concerns. And since then, we have also reorganized the corporation. There has been a buy-sell agreement where Mr. Ying purchased, bought out Andy Chung's share. Andy Chung is no longer involved in this restaurant. There is no financial interest for him either. He's completely out. And we have meeting, have been meeting with the neighbor, and also meeting with various rabbis, and we have a few letters presented by the rabbis as well, supporting our new organization and supporting our new operation. So, we're here to again ask the, the board to approve our application for a new CV license with the same hours, with the same menu. There's no change in any way, other than the, the manager and the owner.
And the name.
And the name as well.
And the liquor license.
Well, no, there's, there is no liquor license. Before we, before we have substantive discussion, I'd like to wait for our two colleagues to So, we're, we're just waiting for select person Heller at this point. What are your plans with the liquor license? Are you, are you going to go, are you going to go through the process of trying to get it unsuspended?
No, we are not at this point. We actually are not applying for a beer and wine license. That's what this restaurant had before. It was, it was suspended and then was permanently taken away from us, but we are not applying for a new one at this point. We have no plans.
So, should you?
Surrender it.
Yeah. Are you looking, are you going to surrender the license? That would help us out a lot, if.
I don't know what the official process would be, but at this point, we're not planning to obtain or apply for a new license for the new corporation.
So.
We want it.
Yeah. If, if you're not planning on using it, we can go through a process to, you know, the legal process to get it back, or you can just give it to us.
Yes, I think we would just surrender it back to the city.
Okay, that, that would help us.
Absolutely. We have no plan to use it at this point.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Now, explain to me whether in Brookline, people can bring their own wine into a restaurant like this, or?
Yes, we have, we have regulation that would allow it. I, yes, it would, but they'd have to go through a.
But they do have to go through a process.
They have to, yes. We have a process for a so-called BYOB license, if you have an interest in that. You could talk to Don in our, in this select board's office.
It's actually a question on the common vittual license application. It's page 13, 9 of our packet. It says, "BYOB, will you permit patrons to bring your own alcoholic beverages into the premises?" And the applicant has responded, "No." So, it's there.
We have an interest.
It's an option. There's some regulations about it, but.
Now that we're back to full, to a full complement, so, this is the reorganization of the restaurant that was here, what, about six weeks ago, and Mr. Chung is completely out of the picture, and they're looking to get a new common vittual license.
Change your name.
And change, change the name.
Change the name, absolutely.
Hopefully, the associations are not going to be there.
Right.
That's right.
Makes sense.
Okay, any questions?
I had a question about renovation of the space. This is a space that I think there's been some renovations taking place, or were taking place, to the exterior, and I note on the license application, page 13, 10 of our packet, there are no renovations anticipated. Am I right that the, the roofwork has been concluded and the cornice has been updated and stabilized, so we're all set? That's behind, behind the restaurant?
My understanding is that that's part of the building permit application taken on by the landlord, and in terms of the interior, there was, the work is not such that you cannot continue to operate the business, so.
So, there's a differentiation between interior work and external work?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? This is not a public hearing, but we'll.
Yep. Will the menu remain the same?
I believe so. I believe so.
But I saw a menu.
Yes. It's.
Page 13, 14 and 15. If there's any member of the public who wishes to speak in behalf of this license, Mr. Rubenowitz.
Constable Stephen Rubenowitz, Town of Brookline. Again, I want to thank Selectmen for their kindness in the last meeting we had, and I brought out many of the issues. I don't want to repeat them all. The only thing is that I can say that I'm very happy to report that many changes that I watched and took over, and I'm glad also, what you mentioned about some of the renovation. I know that they went ahead and repainted the inside, made it look good, and I know that they went through other areas in the bathrooms and things to make it safe and sound. And I know that I'm very thankful that we have such a police force, that we have some of the lieutenants that have come down and inspected and said anything they could offer to help, and there's nothing more that I could add. To thank everybody for what their contribution and whatever they did to make this back on the right track and push the community to have a way of not having so many restaurants close at one time. We lost Rubens, which was unbelievable, but as they say, this was sort of one of the last holdovers. So, if anything I can do to help in any way, I've been there, and so I, again, any questions that you might ask me, I'd be glad to answer it.
Okay. I think we ready for a vote? Okay. So, I'll move that we approve the application of the Kosher Wok Inc., doing business as the Kosher Wok Chinese Restaurant. Taisheng Ying, president for Common Vittular and Entertainment Radio and Tape Music License at 423 Harvard Street. The hours of operation are Monday through Thursday, 11:00 AM to 9:30 PM. Friday, 11:00 AM to 2:45 PM. Saturday, closed, and then Sunday, 12:00 PM to 9:30 PM, and no alcohol will be served. And I'll just note that the applicant has stated that they will surrender their alcohol license, and that should appear in the minutes. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And it's your votes aye.
Thank you very much.
I just want to say, I love the name.
Thank you.
Good luck.
I have to thank everybody who comes to my retirement party. Sign and papers now, make sure I got that.
You're gonna have beer, right?
BYOB.
Okay.
Don't be asked, poor people.
Okay, next item is a question of an application of Chipotle, Mexican Grill, at 876 Commonwealth Commonwealth Avenue for change of hours.
One hour later.
Oh, okay. So this is to go one hour later to eleven P M. on Sunday and Saturday.
Sunday through Saturday. Seven days a week.
Seven days a week. Oh, okay.
It's one hour.
It's one hour. Is the applicant here? Come on up, join the party. Why don't you introduce yourself?
My name's Tom Canares. I'm apprentice over at the B U Chipotle. Right now, they're expanding a lot of stores that have more traffic. So we don't have like any alcohol, so nothing to be crazy. Just do one more hour for like students that are getting out of the gym or like events.
Okay. There's no alcohol here. This isn't a residential area. Seems pretty straightforward. Any questions from the board?
Seems straightforward.
Okay. So I'll move that we approve the application of Chipotle Mexican Grill Colorado LLC, doing business at Chipotle Mexican Grill, eight seventy-six Commonwealth Avenue, holder of a common vittular's license for change of hours to Sunday to Saturday, ten A, ten forty-five A M. to eleven P M. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you for your patience.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay. Next item up is Crown Castle, renewal of the license agreement for a distributed antenna system.
Good evening. My name is Joe Shannon. I'm the government relations manager for Crown Castle. I'm here with Amanda Cornwall from Crown Castle. And we are delighted by Brookline's forward-thinking effort to encourage small cell deployment and the public right of way. We know that you guys have adopted the standard license agreement that is very similar to the city of Boston's. And we are, we've been, we've been in the community since two thousand and eight, and our existing license agreement expires next month. So we have adopted, or we have executed your new standard agreement and would love to renew it under those terms.
Okay. Mr. Bukite, can you just tell us a little about the standard agreement and?
John Bukite, associate town council, the office of town council. This is a standard agreement. You entered into the exact same agreement with three other wireless telecommunication providers back in November.
We're not breaking new ground here.
You're not, you're not. And the, the goal was to standardize an agreement and then allow everyone to enter into that same agreement because there is a prohibition on discriminating unfairly against any of these entities. So we thought this would be the best way to do it, so.
And my understanding is that the process is going to remain the same, that this board is the ultimate grantor of authority, but the planning board has a role in vetting. And the signing of this agreement doesn't alter or impact future actions by this board, sort of curb our, our ability to make tweaks as necessary.
That is exactly correct. You, the provision in the zoning bylaw, section four point nine, if I'm not mistaken, is still in place, as well as the grant of location process, should that be necessary. But this just provides the framework. It talks about the insurance obligations, the revenue that the companies will provide us for the right to use the right of way, so.
Are there any members of the public who wish to speak about this license agreement? Because I understand there have been some issues at, on Walcott Road. Want to come up?
My name is Conan Brewer, the sixty-eight Walcott.
Just say your name once again, just make sure.
Name is Conan Brewer.
Okay.
And I live in sixty-eight Walcott Road. And we had an issue with the original installation, which was put, because of location, the house location, the pole, it was basically right in front of our front windows. It was at that point, I believe it's next G was the original, I can't quite remember. The original contract was changed. It was very noisy. It had a cooling system that was, I think, designed for more industrial use. It appears to be better. Mr. Shannon has said that they are planning to both enlarge the box, insulate the blocks, and create better airflow. So I think, you know, it's worth trying. We're pleased that they changed the ownership. Personally, it seemed to be more responsive than the original ownership. I hope the town in the future, when it looks at this type of machinery, will take a little better look at the kind of technology that's used as opposed from residential to industrial. There is, there is a big difference, so we appreciate all the effort and help. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Well, maybe someone can explain what the structure is. I mean, I guess I didn't realize it was a box.
Sure. Let Mr. Shannon describe that. Sure. So small cell technology is what, the, the problem that we're solving is when you've got four bars on your phone, on your phone, and you can't make a call. Every, you know, macro facility can only handle so many calls at one time. This is expanding that capacity so that whatever that number is, it's X plus fifty.
Boosting the.
That's exactly right. This is really a predecessor for five G technology. As devices are getting smarter and the need for really quick response times is increasing, the antenna needs to be closer to the, to the device that's being used. We're talking about autonomous vehicles. We're talking about medical equipment. We're talking about a wide variety of new and upcoming technology. What the equipment looks like, it's an antenna that's on the, on a street light or on a utility pole and a little box on the side of it that holds a radio that's fed back with fiber to, to the, to the wireless carrier's network.
I'm going to propose a condition that Crown Castle continue to work with the residents of sixty-eight Walcott to reduce the noise by the note in front of their house as, as part of this vote. Is that okay?
Well, I'm on this side of the table.
Right, well, I.
I should have.
It's okay for us.
Right, okay. Do you have any objection? That's a better word. Better, better question.
Take silence as an answer. You know, the reality is, we've got a significant amount of infrastructure already in the road today. We, we would rather a renewal with no conditions to protect, to protect our interests, but we've already been working collaboratively with, with Ms. Brewer and others in town. We're going to have a new installation by the end of the week or the beginning of next, and we're hoping that that's going to work.
Okay. So I'll, I'll move that the select board vote to approve and authorize Mr. Kleckner to execute the license agreement by and between Crown Castle and G East LLC and the Town of Brookline, on the condition that Crown Castle continue to work with residents of sixty-eight Walcott Road to reduce the noise made by the note in front of their house during periods of warm weather. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you very much.
We have the, the Brookline Fiscal Advisor, FAC. I don't know if I like that.
You couldn't come up with any.
B F A C.
I, you're welcome to, to mess with the title. Just leave the rest of it untouched.
So I, I know, select person Franco has been working hard on revising the charge, and there is a revised charge.
I got four copies. Do other people have copies of this?
I've got a copy.
Okay, I got four.
So the, it's a, it's a two-page charge. And, and in our packets, is an updated charge from what we received on Friday night. One is a, a so-called clean copy, and the other is a redlined version, so you can see what changed. As our chair ably described, this has been something that I have been working on with others in town for the past several weeks. And I think we have arrived at, at a draft that everybody's, let's just say, equally dissatisfied with, which means it's probably fair. I think, I think we came to, to a meeting on the minds, and I think everybody is comfortable with this charge. Just to briefly go through it, this is a committee that came out of the two thousand seventeen, two thousand and eighteen override study committee process. The advisory committee, I think, correctly suggested that we form sort of a, a very high-level committee to look at, at the town's fiscal and financial projections, to think about whether our budget principles and, and policies were right, and to help us figure out a way to maybe get at this, this question of affordability of our schools and how we're going to maybe get off what seems to be a cycle of overrides every three or, or four years. This is a committee that is currently conceived to be about no more than eleven voting members, with a member of the select board and the school committee as liaisons, not voting members of the committee. The leadership of the committee, the chairmanship, would be from one of those eleven voting residents, members. I think my impression of this committee, and I think those that I've been communicating with and getting feedback on the draft charges from, think of this as a, as a committee very much in, in line with the nineteen ninety-four F PAC committee and the two thousand and eight override study committee, where we got some accomplished, knowledgeable residents to come in and really do a ten-thousand-foot view of, of what we were doing in town and to give us some, some advice about how we might be able to modernize and, and do things more effectively, more efficiently, and gave us some thoughts to chew on. This committee, there are some qualifications that are spelled out in the, in the charge. I'm on page two of the charge now. And I'll just read from, from the charge itself here. Members shall have significant experience and expertise in one or more of the following disciplines: finance, including corporate finance, municipal finance, investments, underwriting, so on; accounting, budgeting, financial controls; economics, economic development, land use, planning, purchasing, and/or logistics. And then other disciplines might be strategic planning, legal, large enterprise management. So we're really looking for, for people with a significant amount of executive level or leadership experience in the for-profit, nonprofit, academic, or government setting. I know that this board has seen a previous version of this charge, I think several weeks ago. This is, I'll say, an improvement, certainly an advancement of that previous charge, and happy to answer any specific questions that people might have.
My, my, my big concern with this is it's a very ambitious charge.
Mm-hmm.
And I guess the, the, the task that we have before us calls for it, so. I, I would expect to that, certainly, we're, we're doing some things right. So I, I suspect too that some, some of what we're doing, hopefully a lot of what we're doing, will be validated. And some of what we're doing can be improved, certainly. And, and I also think that perhaps some of our policies can, can, can use a fresh, fresh eyes.
I'm wondering whether, given the breadth of the charge, whether the goal of having a detailed written report by September nineteenth is.
September.
September two thousand and nineteen.
Two thousand and nineteen, right. Not September nineteenth, not a month from now.
It's late, yeah. But I, I, no, it's a year from now. By the time it really gets going, it won't be till October and, you know. So I'm just concerned about that, because I think that's ambitious.
So let me respond to both of those comments. I, I don't, I agree that this is an ambitious charge. And I think I'm not afraid of asking big questions and hoping to get big and complete answers. If we don't aim high, then, then we're guaranteed not to get.
No, I, I agree with that. I guess the question of whether it can be done in this time.
I think that, that's a totally fair question. The words of this charge say, "The committee shall strive to submit a detailed report."
I noticed that.
Strive is a, is an underlined, bolded, italicized word there. And I go into this acknowledging that it's a lot of work to do in a relative short amount of time. And if the committee fails to meet that suggested deadline of September nineteenth, I think as long as they're working hard and that there is a clear progress towards delivering something, I'll be okay. But I think we've got to put some date in there so it doesn't drag on endlessly. And maybe September nineteenth is the right timeframe, maybe it's the wrong timeframe, but it's a stake in the groundwork.
Well, maybe it could be worded in such a way that it could be a interim or a, a report of its progress today.
I think the word strive is.
Progress today.
I, I thought a lot about whether an interim report would be the right way to go. And my thinking, and I look forward to feedback from everybody here, is I think this is a committee that's going to take a little bit of time to get up to speed, sort of like a train, you know? Inches along, and then towards the end, it really picks up speed. And, and having a, sort of an interim reporting deadline on progress, I just, I wasn't sure how much we were going to get out of it.
Here's a, here's a question. Should we put in the charge a requirement for a public hearing?
I see no harm in having a public hearing.
People expect it.
Yeah, I think, I, I, well, it would set an expectation upfront that there's going to be public participation.
Yeah, I, so I think that that's, it's a good, it's a good suggestion. I'm certainly not opposed to it. My one counter to it is this is a committee that's not going to be empowered to do anything. It's got a, it's really a policy conversation, and it's going to go through the select board, the advisory committee, maybe town meeting. There's going to be other opportunities for people to weigh in, but.
But I think, just thinking back to some of our prior, you know, big-picture committees, we've, we've always had at least one public, I'm thinking especially, say, the two thousand eight override study committee that I participated in, we, we had a public hearing. And it was actually quite useful. We got some good comments. So it's, it's, I think it's, it's also good, you, you don't want this committee to be political, but I think they have to be aware of some of the political pressures that we bear. And getting feedback from the public will kind of make them aware.
So I would suggest at the bottom of the, let me phrase it as, right before the underlying structure, sort of bullet point, we put text in that says, "Prior to delivering a final written report, the Brookline Fiscal Advisory Committee shall hold at least one public hearing."
Yeah, I think, I think the way we did it back in two thousand and eight, if memory serves me right, which it may not, is we, we had a, we did a public presentation of a summary of the recommendations and, and then took feedback from that. We had a slideshow, if I recall, and the report, and a draft version of the report was put up on the website.
I also want to take the opportunity to encourage applications for membership to this committee. I guarantee if we don't get members, then we're not going to meet the September nineteenth deadline, nor are we going to fulfill the ambitious charge. So I think there, there is a, there have been a couple of applications already prior to approval of the charge, which is. approval of the charge, which is a.
Good sign.
It's a good sign. It's a, a feat for people to sign up to do something that is unspecified. But there is, there is an application form on the select board's website, which people can fill out and send them to the select board's office for, for consideration of their appointment to this committee.
Okay. So I'll move acceptance of the charge as amended. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And last item up is the taxation aid committee. And we have a proposed slate for members. Who's going to talk about that?
I will, I will take it on. So as this board may remember, the most recently concluded town meeting, we voted a so-called, or actually, it was the November town meeting, excuse me, was a so-called check-the-box provision, which appeared on the July one real estate tax bill. And the other part of, besides putting that check-the-box on the bill, was that we had to appoint a committee to administer the dispersion of the funds that were collected. Good news is, we've got some funds to disperse, and here we are, appointing the committee. By statute, the finance director and the chief assessor have to be on the committee. That would be Gina Francone and Gary McCabe, in the case of Brookline. And then we've got three sort of discretionary spots. And we've got two names that will be put forward this evening, one that hopefully we'll come back to at our next meeting, or maybe in early September. I would propose that we appoint Nancy Daly, Neil Gordon, two people who have spent a lot of time thinking about senior issues in this town and senior tax issues in this town. I will say that that last vacancy, that last seat, I am inclined to appoint somebody who's got some expertise and is plugged into the disabled community in Brookline. This is a committee that's able to provide tax relief, not only to elderly, to senior residents, but also disabled residents. And I think that it makes sense to have a representative of that, that population in town on this committee with a seat at the table.
Okay. Any discussion? So, so are we voting to establish the committee?
I think town meeting already established the committee.
So all we need to do is appoint. So I will move that we appoint Gina Francone, Gary McCabe, Nancy Daly, Neil Gordon to the taxation aid committee. And not as part of this vote, just a general understanding amongst us that in the next couple of meetings, we'll have another name that'll be proposed to us. So all those in favor of appointing those four individuals, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And I think that concludes our business for tonight. Okay.